All right, thank you. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We will start with the exemplary people and Mark Schwartz is going to lead us for that. Yes, we're going to join you.
Welcome, everyone, especially our students and parents. Special evening tonight, and I'm very happy to get the opportunity to present our commended students and National Merit Scholar semifinalists. So, just a little bit about the test. Every fall in October here at Massey, we issue the PSAT, which is known as well as the NMSQT, which stands for the National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test. Participation in this test makes all students eligible for potential scholarship opportunities. Last year, over one and a half million students across the country took this assessment, and the top 50,000 students were determined, and they are awarded the title of commended students. This is a very competitive group of young people, and they represent a very small fraction of the people that actually took the assessment. To be recognized as part of this group is really an amazing accomplishment. So, I'm very happy to introduce, and I'm going to ask you to come up when I call your name, five Massey seniors who, when they took the test last fall, are to be recognized this evening as commended students. And they are Kayla Wallett. Next, Veronica Regina. Congratulations. Next, Victoria Memesheimer. Congratulations, Victoria. Jack Kimball. And Justin Kneelik. Congratulations. Before we start, congratulations. You might want to hold that, Mr. Batista. We have one more.
We've got one more.
The top 16,000 students, or the top 16,000 highest performers of this group are designated as National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. And Massey was notified the name of a young man who is in our senior class, who is part of this even more exclusive group because of his high academic achievement on this assessment. I am pleased and proud to recognize Amit Gupta as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. Amit will now have the opportunity to continue in the National Merit Scholarship competition and advance as a finalist by meeting a number of additional requirements. So, congratulations to all of our students this evening.
If you would come up and line up right in front of us, okay? So, we can tighten up a picture. Need our photo op.
We love to report the good things, so.
I kind of feel awkward.
After this, suppose, we're going to make a pyramid.
I kind of don't like, I kind of like skip it, like.
Thank you very much.
Ken, if you want.
We don't have school tomorrow.
Yeah. That's part of my report.
Great, thank you very much.
We should have just told you to stay.
Maybe I shouldn't make those offers anymore, make everybody sit.
All right, moving on to the report of the chairman. I don't have anything this evening, just the congratulations to all the kids who already left. So, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Christine, I'll take you as a second. Do I have any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor? Motion passes, thank you very much. We will move on to our reports of our committee and liaisons, and we will start with our Massey board reps.
Okay, so, as Ally said before, there is no school tomorrow, and report cards are coming out this Wednesday because the end of the quarter was last Friday, so teachers get those out to the parents. And because of those report cards, there's going to be, going to be early dismissals Tuesday, the 10th, and Monday, the 16th for parent conferences after parents see those report cards, so.
This Saturday will be an SAT administration here at Massey. This is the last SAT for most seniors applying to college because it's in November. Kids apply in December and January, so they're going to try to get in their scores here, or even for early applications, which were due yesterday night, or most early applications, early decisions, stuff like that, for all the college-bound seniors. And also, we will be having a Veterans Day assembly here at Massey on Wednesday. It's going to be an open house here in the library, so instead of having the veterans present their stories to the whole school, kids can come in and classes will come in at different times of the day and actually have a more personal communication with the veterans, talking and having like a forum to talk about their experiences. And the culinary department here, all the kids will be preparing their lunch.
The forum for underage drinking is next Tuesday, November 12. And the forum is for freshman students and their parents, and it tells them and warns them about the effects of underage drinking. I know I went my freshman year, and it was a really great night, and I know it was really eye-opening, beneficial to me and every other student in our grade. Also, for sports, postseason play is in full swing. Sadly, soccer lost first round of SWCs, but it's okay, we're coming back for states. And I know this Saturday, SWC Swimming is hosting the SWC meet for all of the girls.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lee, do you have a report for communication?
Yes, communications committee met tonight. We reviewed the draft of the next superintendent's newsletter from Jim, and it was excellent. And on the front page highlighted Massey High School being named a blue ribbon school, so that was awesome. It'll probably go in the mail by the end of the week and in homes next week, so be on the lookout. We also talked about the status on teacher webpages and emails. And as you may recall, the survey last year, 92% of everyone felt like communication was very, very good, but there were some concerns about inconsistency with teachers' websites and email responses. So, that has become a very high priority. All of the principals have, have addressed it. There are accountability measures in place, and we're very confident that there will be more consistency across the board. Finally, we talked about the upcoming budget and outreach. We're probably going to follow the same patterns that we did last year. Jim will be getting out, doing his outreach after the first of the year in the spring to various groups and influential leaders and communicate and educate people on the number and the budget and what's contained therein.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? All right, George, do you have anything from policy?
Yeah, we had, we have two for vote tonight, so second review, and three for first review tonight. We'll bring, bringing more next meeting.
Any other, anybody else have any committee reports? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. Anybody would like to speak, come up to the microphone? Nobody? All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent then.
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up to this evening. First, I'd like to update you all on the turf field building committee. Turf field building committee met last Tuesday, and we are pretty near completion of phase A, or A of the study. If you remember, the turf field design team, that commitment is in two parts. The first part is to come up with a conceptual design, cost estimates for a building project, et cetera. They give you enough information to bring you to a bond referendum or town meeting, okay? And then phase two is when those documents are really detailed, bid specifications are put together, and you go forward with, with going out to bid for contractors to do, to do the work. So, we are now at that point where Melona McRum is ready to make presentations. So, at our next board meeting on November 16th, you will be the first to get the lowdown on where the design is and what the estimated costs are at this point. This is a comprehensive solution to the stadium down there. It includes replacement of the lights, replacement of the scoreboard, resurfacing the track. The underlayment of the track is in good shape, drainage work and an artificial turf stadium lined for all sports that use a field of that size, okay? So, it'll be a very comprehensive project. Chances are, if it was a go-forward project and it was approved at a town meeting, we could potentially break ground in June and be playing on that field in September of next year, if, if all the cards fell exactly right. After the Board of Education gets their presentation on November 23rd, we are scheduled to go to the town council and do a similar presentation to the town council to make sure that everybody there is well-educated about the project and cost estimates, et cetera. And then we go forward from there to probably a town meeting or a referendum, depending. As you know, our Assistant Director of Finance resigned, took another position. We are in the process tomorrow of interviewing for the replacement of that person. We did get a fair number of applicants for that, so we're confident that we'll replace June. We want to wish June Safferson well, and she's been with us 13 years, and time for her to do something a little bit new and different, so we wish her the best. The guidance position has been, an offer has been extended to, to a candidate. The candidate has verbally accepted the position. I anticipate talking with that person tomorrow and finalizing that, and then John will be meeting with them, with that person to bring them onboard. This is a person who is currently employed at another district, and at this time of year, superintendents, we have a gentleman's agreement that, you know, we could hold the person until 60 days typically, 30 to 60 days, depending on, you know, how tough it is to replace that position. So, we'll see how that, how that goes. We also want to tell you a little bit about the, the regional calendar issue, not issue. You're all aware that a couple of years ago, the legislature passed the common regional calendar. Each of the RSCs in the state of Connecticut came up with common calendars. We're allowed to deviate five days within the adopted calendar. What we're going to be proposing to the board when it's time is a two-year calendar, okay? Because we, the two years' worth of regional calendars have already been established for 16, 17, and 17, 18. So, we see no point in doing it one year at a time when we can, we can do it in one fell swoop and do a two-year calendar out there. John and I are presenting the versions to the parent council on Wednesday, getting some feedback from parents before pursuing and bringing it to your attention for your approval, ultimate approval. John, you want to add anything to the calendar issue? Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have no presentations sadly tonight. I know everybody's disappointed. So, we will move on to old business, which is student assessment result questions. We put this on the agenda after John did his presentation so that we didn't, he didn't go into full in-depth on a lot of the specifics, so we went, we said we would put this on if anybody had questions this week after reviewing the information. Does anybody have any? Nope. All right. Great, we will then move on to curriculum. Item B, do I have a motion to approve the textbook Technical Graphics Communication from Massey's drafting, one, Architecture, one, and Architecture, two courses? Thank you, second, Alan. Thank you. Do I have any discussion on this particular textbook that was presented last meeting? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the textbook Technical Graphics Communication? Thank you. Motion passes. Item C, we have policies, the second review and vote anticipated for policy 4114, which is students' suspension and expulsion due process, and policy 4144.1, students' use of physical force. So, I have a motion to approve these two policies. Thank you, George. Christine, as a second, do I have any discussion on these policies? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, motion passes, thank you. We will move on to item D, which is Board of Education Goals and Action Plans Update. All right.
Use this so that people in TV land can actually see it. As you know, we're in our second iteration of Board of Education Goals and Action Plans. I'm very proud to say that we take these things very seriously, and we treat them as a living document at all times, and continuously examine our status on them compared to what we know and what we're doing, and making sure that we are carrying out the wishes of the board and, you know, setting these kinds of goals and action plans. So, one of the things that I want to talk about this evening with you is that we've had a lengthy discussion over the past several months about goals and action plans because there were so many things that we felt we were doing in addition to the goals and action plans that weren't reflected in the goals and action plans. So, on page three of the document itself, the first thing is that we, we want to amend that, that whole series of that goal and the eight objectives by creating a ninth objective there, and that is to create a technology literacy curriculum to provide clear vision and direction for teaching and learning, as well as technology resource acquisition. And then on page five of the document, John, if you could just go down to the facilities one, we would like to add to that goal, you know, we're saying that Monroe Public Schools will maintain high-quality facilities to meet the curricular and extracurricular needs. We want to add number five as an objective, assess the current condition of the school roofs to create an ongoing preventative maintenance and replacement plan. We want to convene a, the committee to study the turf field because that's certainly occupying some of our time and work. And seven, we have three oil tanks still in the ground that are slated for removal, two next summer, and one the following summer, and those are pretty, they carry with them hefty price tags, and we have to budget and, and prepare for those. If you look now on page nine of the document, we have it up here. So, when we, when we want to add, one of the, one of the things that I didn't discuss yet is we want to add is the curriculum for the guidance area, okay? And so, on page nine of that document, the curriculum will be developed, written, and being implemented in the elementary schools. Fullborn, Monroe L., and Fawn Hollow, and Stepney has an abbreviated version. And the curriculum is currently completed. Implementation is, is going on, and now with the new guidance position coming onboard, we're very confident that we'll be able to do a really good job of implementing this going forward. The next change is on page 18. And this is the creation of the technology literacy curriculum. And, and there, there are two action steps specifically. One is to develop the technology literacy curriculum, and if you look across on the timeline there, that curriculum has been written already since last year. And then the second step is to meet with all grade-level teachers to create assured experiences that ensure technology outcomes are embedded in all grade levels and content areas. Meetings have already begun. All remaining meetings will be completed by the end of January this, this school year. So, that's a work well along on its way. The next change is our pages 29 to 33 to reflect those changes that we're recommending regarding facilities. Hold my packet. I'm relying on paper here. Did anybody notice that? That came up in our previous meeting. Okay, so, under facilities, maintaining high-quality facilities to meet curricular and extracurricular needs, the fifth objective is to assess the current condition of the school roofs. Now, you know, we've done some very good roof projects at Fawn Hollow and here at Massey. We know that Stepney still is out there. There are wet spots in the insulation out there. We've had the roof re-scanned. You can see that scan was action step one, that's completed, and leaks in Monroe L. were completed as well. Those scans, incidentally, on Stepney show that although the leak, the wet areas have gotten slightly larger, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, they have not gotten substantially larger, so we're still there. So, you know, we're going to be looking for a roof project probably within the next year and a half, two years.
What did we do there? We did the cafeteria?
We did just the cafeteria roof there, yeah. And I forget, was that about nine, was that 6,000 square feet? Jack, do you remember the square footage on the cafeteria roof? Okay, but, yeah, that was a total rip-off and tear-off and replacement. The preventative maintenance plan is something that we really needed to put into play here with these roofs, so that, we have that plan, it's, it's completed, and it's ongoing, that we're watching these roofs and repairing and replacing things as we need to so that water incursions don't ever become the problem that they were just a few years ago, especially here at Massey. On page 31, objective number six is to convene the committee studying the turf field, and you can see that we've really sped away here. We got the committee up and running, we've got the RFP for the design team. The design, as I said earlier, is almost over, and then we have our two presentations. We did not carry out action steps beyond the two presentations because at this time we feel that we need to wait and see what the wishes of the townspeople will be before we'll, so, you know, after, if, if we were to have a successful town meeting on this and go forward with the project, we would probably add some more additional action steps there. And then replacing the oil tanks, these are state and federal laws that we need to comply with. The two, the one at Massey and at Stepney are at their 25-year mark this summer, so they, they need to be pulled and replaced this summer. Massey is slated for the following summer to be dug up and, and done. So, we've had some preliminary conversations of whether or not this should be an operational item in our budget, or if it should be a one-shot deal like a bond issue. I've had that conversation with the chairman of the Board of Finance. His thinking, at least, you know, to me on the phone, has been that this is likely a bond-issue thing that we should do because it only happens once every 25 years when tanks need to be pulled, so why bury that in as an operational expense? I tend to agree with that and think that that's the better way to go. We're looking probably in the 400,000, give or take, range for the three tanks to do that. Jack is working with Fussin O'Neil, our hygienist, to, to actually bundle this now, and hopefully we can get some, some group savings or whatever.
Is it better to do all three in the same year instead of waiting the extra year for the 25th year for Massey?
Right, that's what the thinking is, that we should be able to get a, a group discount if we do all three at once.
And if, since we're bond, if we do think we're going to bond for it, is this something we're going to have to put out there for an RFP? Would it be better for us?
Yeah, we, my understanding, Fussin O'Neil would do the, the design, the bid specs probably for the, for the contractors to do that, and then, yeah, because it's over the limits for, we have to, we have to get qualified vendors for that. I apologize, I thought I turned that off.
They're currently underground?
Yes, and they'll go underground again.
Houses can't be, houses can't be legally, schools are different.
Yeah, these are giant-sized tanks. You know, they're, I have seen some that have been put above ground. You have to build very elaborate containment systems in order to do them above ground. All the tanks today are double-walled fiberglass construction, and they're monitored on a, you know, pretty much a daily basis for leakage and that type of thing, so. Yeah, George?
Monroe L. has gas now? So, it's a dual-fuel system there, and we're, we, do we heat the school based on the, the cost of, of the, you know, what's cheaper?
Gabby and Jack, I'm going to have, refer that to you because we pulled, remember last year, we pulled the big water tank in front of Monroe L.?
We do, we do heat currently Monroe L. with natural gas, just like Massey. We'll be heating Massey all of next year on natural gas. It really depends on the price of oil. As you know, oil prices have kind of plummeted. The Saudis have been very kind and have decided to pump all their oil. It's also depressed natural gas prices because it's made fracking operations in North Dakota really, really expensive. So, even though gas has come down, oils come, even though oils come down, gas has come down as well. The breakeven for us is below a buck ninety per gallon for oil, and it's not there yet, so we're still heating with gas. It's, it's nice to be able to play.
But the direction is to, to maintain a dual-fuel system.
And that's, those are the addendum items to our goals and action plans. You can see in the timelines and all the other items that we have in here, their, their current status, and like I said, we review these periodically. We'll have another review of goals and action plans towards the end of the school year to bring you up to date on any other changes that need to be made and the status of the items that were slated in the original document. Any, this is going to be online?
It is.
It is currently?
Under Board of Education.
Right. John, if you could go to any page where the, the action steps are detailed, yeah, right there, you can see the update, January 2015. I mean, we've actually updated since then, that green column on the end, so you can find out pretty, pretty accurate information about the current status of any one of our action plans or action steps. Any questions? Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you. I want to apologize, Mark is not here tonight, so we need a secretary, and thank you for Shannon for letting, no, anybody like to volunteer for that? All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
I'd pick you.
All right. We will move on then to new business. We have three policies that are up for first review, so George, I'm gonna turn it over to you to tell us about those.
Okay, first review, five-one-one-three and five-one-one-three dot two, two policies that were changed to reflect changes in the state attendance law, so dealing with definition of chronically absent, absent children, and development and remediation plans to, to, to address those. And we obviously, we, in this case, borrowed a lot of language from, from CAPE. In the policy five-one-three-one dot six, the change there is to add e-cigarettes to the, the list. That's, that's it, so we'll vote on those next time.
All right, does anybody have any questions on those, any of those?
Just, just a couple of comments. First of all, all of this policy work really is, is quite impressive that the board has taken this on as seriously as they have over the, all the time that I've been here, and John's leadership in, in helping to, you know, keep you up to date on changes in legislation, legislation, that kind of thing, that spawns these redos that we need to do. I, I have to say that CAPE is just an extraordinary resource for us regarding the policies because as soon as legislative, the legislative season ends, their policy people get into high gear, and they send us a list of what policies need to be changed, what policies should be changed, what policies you could change with suggested verbiage and, and that kind of thing, and so this, that service, I think, is well worth our membership with CAPE, just in and of itself, not, not even all the other things that they do for us.
Yeah, agreed. They, they certainly make our job much easier in terms of crafting these and updating them, you know, to your point, they, they provide us recommended language, but not just one set of it, but they'll go, offer us options, you know, so.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
And then you make it work for...
Yeah, and a lot of times, we, we, we talk about it and we tailor it to, to meet the needs of the district, so we might borrow some verbatim and we may just craft some according to their recommendation.
Great. Anybody have any questions on that? All right, all right, we are at, actually adjournment, and it's actually only eight oh three, wow, I think that's a record.
Mrs. Fitch?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Wow.
Jeff gets swiped with a ball.
He'll make up for it the next meeting.
Yeah.